Were you going to make an announcement about the quarter of the agenda? It had a little note on there that you were going to do that.
Oh, they did. Yes, it is there. Okay, so I just want to, we met a couple of weeks ago and we made a couple revisions to the agenda. There may be more to come, but essentially what we've done is we have swapped information and discussion and action items so that the meat of what's discussed and how decisions are made will happen sooner in the meeting. Such I think will be a positive change. And also give you all an opportunity to participate in any of those discussions if necessary. And then beginning with the September 5th meeting, facilities and bond updates will either be given by Brett and his superintendent report, or John can submit a memo. So those are a couple of changes we've made. We may make some changes to when, I believe there's desire to have the students speak first also, which is something that we'll do once we have our student reps again. And then we may make some changes to the placement of citizens comments. Yeah, thank you, Sarah. For the reminder. Okay. And with that, essentially positive, please go in first.
Welcome to Orkneyville, everybody. Kent, well, there, that's all that we're here at Orkneyville. Not, I don't have the exhaustive list today, but I would like to thank maintenance, you know, I know the line share of the work was done in the part of the district, but some painting tends to be spending here and school looks great. I'm also very thankful that consistency, I think that brings traction. Orkneyville has the same principal two years in a row. And we have the very same staff. We have one new classified staff member and Ben and will be joining us from Biggs High School. So I looking forward to the consistency to offer.
Thank you. I think you can try it from there. I think I'll be all right.
Good evening, everybody. I did a little bit of a big list because we just got started. But I do want to give a specific shout out to John for the work that's happening at Town Elementary. I don't know if you guys got to touring yet, but it's looking fantastic and we're just super eager. And I know John's been lurking around and thought and collaborating with our partners to make sure that that's ready to go. But it's crazy how much they get done in just a short amount of time. But Outliers has been fantastic to work with. So and then all the partner businesses that are working with them. But I do want to say, share that we are having our kind of open house kind of back to school or even teaching kindergarten on August 28th, and it'll be a big deal. We'll have Kona Ice. And we'll have food truck, and there'll be really welcome little friends. And then on the 29th, we will have a evening event for our fall for our family families. And I encourage you to come at that time because that's the first time we're going to be sharing the new building with our families. And so it's probably going to be busy, but it's going to be really cool. I'm just super eager to share that and just to have the kids have these new beautiful updated living spaces. It's funny because we've started putting some of the furniture back in. We're like, that doesn't quite match this. Share just an appreciation for Javier and administrative team who's really planned a break in service week coming up these next two weeks. We've got a ton on the plate, but it's really, we've been working really hard to stay focused and look, we, you know, how we spend that time with our staff. So just thanks Javier and the team. And then last but not least, Cheryl and Alma who are combing through Power School pre-registration forms, connecting with families who haven't actually finished the registration process because it's cumbersome. But they've been working extra to try to make sure that we have it already done. So that's it. Good evening, board. Sean Schlagman is still here at Phoenix Elementary School or over there, I mean. I just want to take Kent and be like, we didn't talk about this, but we have the same things we're going to talk about. First and foremost, we had a robust summer school program happening in our school over the summer. And since the custodian crews and the maintenance crews were, were having spent too much time in the other buildings, they did give a lot of time. Yes, we've had a lot of painting done, a lot of upkeep. And so I just wanted to say thank you to our maintenance crew, our paint crew, our custodians. We just bring a lot of light and energy and make a really positive learning space for our school. And then we also had a lot of our staff at PES participate in summer school, a couple of teachers, a lot of classified staff. Lori Delgado was in the office the entire time, which really set us up for a really smooth beginning because she's done a lot of the work around registration and reaching out to families. I'm really excited to report that we have a little bit more students than we did at this time last year. So that feels really good. We've had a lot of cute kids leave, but we've had like just 10 new registrations just in the last two days. So that feels really positive that we're bringing kids in. And then last but not least, similar to Ken, we, my whole teaching staff is consistent from where it was last year. We have any new teachers onboard, which poisons us for a great launch. They bring institutional wisdom, they bring their teaching knowledge, and so really, really excited to just keep moving forward with the progress that we've already made. We do have six instructional staff members because we have a kind of a large instructional staff team given the needs of our parents at our school. And so we have some really great people joining us. We're really excited for that. So it's, we're really, really excited to start school here. You only need to share, you can be here tonight, but you only need me to share that the PTRA is going to start up at its highest enrollment ever as well in the last three years. So they have 41 students starting right now. Usually that enrollment climbs throughout the year, so they're pretty excited about that. They also are excited about really doing some outreach and offering school supplies for people who needed a PTRA and making sure everybody has all of the learning material that they need to school at home. So they're going to make concerted effort to ensure that they're looking good at PTRA.
Good evening, board. I'm Casey Omsen, the principal at Town Middle School. As I was thinking through this being my first time doing this, for me, just thinking about the thoughts of so far has just been the people, starting from, I mean, every person that I've come into contact with, the opportunity to sit down with all of you and get to know you and your wives, the admin team, the district staff, our tech team, Allison and Deanne, I've asked them 7,000 questions and I'm going to continue doing that, sorry, the bits. But it just, there is a clear focus on kids and wanting to do what's right and best for kids. And having the opportunity to be a part of this community and join here is something that I'm so excited to take part in and continue to build relationships at the end of the day and trying to create the best possible environment to help our kids grow. So, thank you.
Good evening, board. Kim Cross, principal at PHS. I've been back for a couple of weeks, so I have a few things to share. First, I wanted to shout out, we are having a registration event today and tomorrow and on Monday for our students. That takes a lot of energy and effort, so I wanted to shout out to the custodial crew who make sure that's all running smoothly, as well as our IT department, who was down at the school at least six times today to make sure printers were printing. That is a complete, they're awesome and they call, as soon as we call, they rush down to help. So that's been great. And I want to shout out to Erica Ochoa for making that magic happen, as well as Myra Silva, who's our office manager, and making sure all the details are taken care of. And our wonderful, wonderful student services team who comes back and then the next day is just cranking schedules, going through registration form, all of those things. So just a shout out to all of them for our registration event. Additionally, we have some awesome summer things happening on our campus as well. Want to shout out to Dave Ehrhart, who isn't at PTS any longer, but did a great job this summer making sure students were having a blast. And that was possible because of the work of Tiffany and her department, making sure that summer school was great. We also had a traditional summer credit retrieval option two weeks before summer blast took place. And so between summer blast and that traditional credit retrieval kind of time, we were able to earn seven to eight credits at the high school. And that doesn't include our private camp that's going to be wrapping up this week where students are also earning credit. So just great things, credits being earned, funding, had kids making connections with caring adults. And I want to shout out to our community partners who have helped make that happen. So we have been able to make connections with life arts. Talent Maker City has been a huge support in that. And also we have had field trips to Oregon Shakespeare Festival. We've been able to represent Phoenix really well at Family Fun Center, all of those kinds of things. So shout out to those. I also want to say welcome to James Joy, who's our new athletic director, and he's starting Fall Sports Off on Monday. Sorry, like blocking there. And I had a great coaches meeting last night with all of our coaches and we're really able to get on the same page and make sure that Sharon's going to be great. Last but certainly not least, I want to thank Joe Zavala, who always makes us look so good. And all of these things are probably not news to you because you've been watching these things roll out through social media and all of the great work that Joe's doing. So thank you, Joe, for making us look great. That's all for me.
All right, anything else? Maybe from the board? Okay, thank you all. Welcome, Casey. Thanks, Joy. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, what's next? Superintendent report? Citizens comments. Okay, do we have anyone here which is to speak? I don't think so. Anyone online which is to speak? Please raise your hand.
That's Denise.
Oh, that's Denise. Okay, then probably not. Now it's superintendent.
Go ahead, Chair Campbell. I also want to officially welcome James and Casey. It's really exciting to have you onboard and just thank this administrative team. We were talking earlier today that I think the feeling is we really feel good about where we are and a little ahead of the game in so many areas. And then these middle of the night detail thing creeps in your head. But really excited about unfolding in-service week and starting with our kids and families here soon. So thank you to our administrative team. In your folder, Denise included an update of out-of-state student activities. You'll see the boys and girls cross-country, the volleyball, and the girls' basketball, who will be attending events outside of our state. So that's just for your review. We also want to talk about, it is so exciting that we'll be starting PTS Rising Early Learning Center, Little Risers, is there going to be called? And there's even a little baby Phoenix. It's just, that place is looking amazing. And Kelly and Monique have been moving in furniture today and just the maintenance and facilities that are supporting that too. And just all the work that goes into really starting a new school. And we have 27 incoming students, which is a good start that may have not had preschool options in our district. So that's fantastic to see. You'll see in your folders, I believe, is a family handbook that we just completed. Also a benefit to our employees is that we're looking at doing a payroll deduction and a reduced rate options as far as how that they're qualified to be able to access preschool. And we have some staff members that have already signed up for that. YMCA is also continues to recruit preschool for the town campus. And it's also really, want to stress that their like financials will not be a barrier, but just a matter of right, connecting families with YMCA and then having them sign up and looking at, because they're committed to being in our district. And they have five or six now, and they're looking at having 10, but up to 20 students on that campus as well. And just as an FYI, our January job meeting, we'll probably have our early learning center present as well as the school. So we can have more information there. Inter-district transfers are rolling in. I thank the district office staff for processing those right away. I know it can be cumbersome, but we, I meet with Denise every morning and she gives me a batch and we reviewed those, both transfers in and out. We have a number of them coming in, as was mentioned earlier, but transfers out that don't meet the hardship requirement we're meeting with. And there, there may be some appeals that are coming up for the board, but I'll keep you updated on that as far as transfer out. But oftentimes when we get them in our buildings and meeting with our staff, that connection oftentimes hasn't what to say. Speaking of enrollment, we work closely with COSA, the administrative organization for the state and Rep Marsh, who's a champion for our region and especially our district, looking at opportunities for this legislative session in 2025, because simply housing has not come back. And it's not just for us, the other districts that have been impacted by fire, the housing is just not there. There, this is the last year that we'll have that ADM security. And so COSA is making it a point to work with Rep Marsh to see if there's, see if there's some longer term support for districts that are still having a big impact on that. And we'll keep you updated on that and how the board can support that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for Brett? I know I have a couple, but I'm going to open it. Do you all first? Thank you for the update. I was just looking through the Early Learning Center handbook. And talking about before and after school care. What is that something that you're working on as a possibility and what might it take to make that happen?
Hey, do you want to speak to that? You want me to speak to that?
Yeah, we all accept that the barrier for some of the families we've spoken with. And then they, you know, need to consider YMCA or one of our other options. I think our goal is definitely to figure that out. There's no question that that we're not serving a contingency of families that need before and after care.
Yeah.
Even if, even if it's, you know, 7:45, 7:30, so that somebody could get to work by 8. The barrier is really, that's probably more doable on shorter timeframe than the after-school care just because of our staffing hours and our budget. You know, our budget's primarily given, given to us by that crystal promise funding. And just kind of all those moving pieces, it felt like a little risky for us to, to get overextended on that this year. So we hope to do that. We need to figure out the budget pieces.
Is that a, is, is, is this the same timeframe that they had before we took over there?
Actually, well, you want to talk to?
It is. They were about the same hours, 8 to 2:30, but they were only Monday through Thursday. There was no school or care on Fridays.
Okay.
So we moved to five days a week.
Yeah.
But it's, it is about 8 to 2:30 and
Yeah.
which is what if they are a transfer family that was in the family nurturing centers preschool promise program before, those are consistent hours, but one more day.
That's great. Okay, awesome.
It's a barrier. It means breaks.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I know I, I would venture to guess we would be supportive of anything we can do to support that. And Brett, just encourage you to, you know, and, and I would say, do we have to go the whole year if we make it happen sooner?
Sure.
Let's figure it out because that's, that's part of it is meeting the need for our community. But I'm so excited to have the preschool and just reading through, through everything. I think it's going to be not just babysitting, it's going to be a really quality program with quality staff and meeting an important need in the community. So, good job.
It's a good point. And there's Rosario's filling that role as a preschool kind of head teacher. And you know, she leads courses at RCC on preschool. And so we're really excited for her expertise on that. And, and just with that said, I think maybe even next week or in the next week, love if you want to take a look and walk through the preschool, it'd be awesome. So.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a program report, strategic plan update.
Yeah, super excited to introduce Javier and he's put together a plan that kind of gives an overview of where we were the first year really of our strategic plan. And it's kind of 30,000 foot, but Javier, all yours.
Yeah, I'm the camera. I'm the real director of instructional improvement and strategic plan coordinator. So thanks for inviting me here today. So I want you to think about this book for a second. Because we get together, we draw plans, and then plans of hours go up to what we're hoping for. However, the reason why I put this book here is because our jobs to pay attention to it, see what's happening, make the necessary adjustments and make sure that we follow through with the things that we said we're going to follow through. I was talking to my father this summer. I hadn't seen him in a year. And he told me, it's funny, when you're young, seeing that you're, you think that your life is going to be a straight path, but when you get older, you realize and you look back, you know that your life has been, it's like up and down. And you know, eventually you get to where you are, you're at. So anyway, so let's go ahead to the next slide. So the first goal on this strategic plan was about attendance. We wanted to make sure that 85% of the students will attend at least 95%, 90% of the, or more of this year. And you're going to, yeah, let's take those the next slide. Well, just click on the space that will be the next slide. Yeah, here we go. Come on, go ahead. Come on, yeah. So where are we at with that? So in 2023, we have 66% of the students attend at least 90% of the time. This year, we went down a little bit, 65%. In elementary, we went up from 65 and a half to 70. In middle school, we saw a slight increase. And in high school, we saw a decline. And I got to talk about that in just a minute. Go ahead. Yeah. So we see great success at elementary level. We're starting to see some growth. I want to continue that trend. At Phoenix Elementary, for example, every single grade level went up on attendance, which is remarkable. We had almost the same at Helen Elementary and Orchard Hill, except for one grade level. So. And I talked to Karen about that, telling me about that particular class that, that they have. At the middle school, we saw in the seventh grade, a huge growth up to 9%. And then the eighth graders went down a little bit. Those are the kids that are going to be going to the high school next year. So we're going to be paying attention to that. Now, the high school, I talked to Brad and Karen about this. The seniors that graduated this year had some of the lowest attendance rates that we have seen in a long time. Now, this is a freshman class that, that came in 2021, right after COVID. So they had a whole different experience in high school in terms of attending from a distance. And you know, I'm adjusting to what high school has been like. So that's kind of what we saw this year in terms of attendance. Okay, on track to graduation, I want to make sure that all the students completing ninth grade have six or more credits. And next slide. This is remarkable. Last year, we had 70, some of the students being attracted to graduation. This year, we have 91%. And that is district-wide. That includes Armadello Technical. And then PHS went from 79 to 92%. Just to give you an idea of what that looks like compared to the state, the Oregon average is 83%. So, well done. I think just having all those graduation coaches and counselors and basically all the stuff that are really, you know, even the summer program that we have this year, you just grab those kids and we go, okay, we're going to work with you and provide what they need to make sure they make it. Next slide. Past school graduation is 96% of students will graduate on time with a regular or modified diploma in four years. So, next slide. So we went in 2023, 90% this year were about what are the same numbers district-wide. And PHS went from 95 to 94. Still, the numbers are remarkable. We want to make sure that we catch all the kids and we get all the kids to get to that finish line. Again, compared to Oregon, the Oregon average is 81%. So, well done. Okay, so if you notice, I went from goal number one, which was attendance, to goal number three and number four. Goal number two is a little complicated, so I put it here. I guess, thought about that. Let's go to the next slide. We want to make sure that our kids are successful in English and we charge them mathematics. And the way that was retaken into the strategic plan was that we want to say at least 45% of the students in third grade will be proficiency in language charts. And 35% of the students in eighth grade will meet state grade level in mathematics. And here's where we lay out this. Next slide. Okay, this is language charts in third grade. When you look at the progression from 21 to 23, 24, we made a little bit of improvement on, at the district level. And then when state stagnant this year, however, we have a lot of things in place. And I, I talk to the elementary principals all the time because we feel like we're reaching tipping point in terms of like student performance and showing proficiency at the grade level. At PS, we had great growth from last year to this year. At TS, just about the same, I thought I held it went down a little bit. But here's what's remarkable about this data. Go ahead and click on the next. If you look at that, those third graders in 21, 22, that's the performance of that. But a couple of years ago, those kids are fifth, were fifth graders this year. Go ahead and click on the next slide. So at the district level, two years ago, we had 28% of those kids made proficiency. Those aren't the same kids, except for, you know, the mobility to rate is not including here. We have 38.5%. So as the grades progress, we see that kids, we have more kids making proficiency. And it's kind of fun to see PS, look at that, 12.8% to 35%, TS, 32 to 42. And Orchard Hill from 36 to 37. We need to see that, that big growth from Orchard Hill. But it's really fun to see how the kids grow through the years. Another thing that we know about these kids is that we have a really large percentage of students learning a second language, English as a second language. And the research shows that it takes about three to five years to achieve proficiency. Then when the kids hit that proficiency level, they take that L assessment. I think we've talked about that in the past. And if the kids have passed L, meaning that they have achieved proficiency in English, their rate of passing the SBA assessment, it's like 95%. So it's amazing what we can do when, when kids achieve proficiency in English as well. Okay, so next slide. So this is what I was saying, that we have a plan. We got together with a consultant and with the Oregon RTI project. And we put together a team of elementary principals, put together the title one coordinators, and we also met with instructional coaches. And we put together a roadmap for implementation of basically our reading program. We adopted a really great curriculum. The strategic plan talks about engagement in the classroom. And we, one of the things that we learned is that teachers need to learn about the science of reading. Last month, I presented, remember, we got engaged with the science of reading. So now we're rolling that out all throughout, through all K5 teachers. Then we're continuing with the academic implementation. And now we know so much more about how to work through that process. During in-service, we're going to engage with the teachers and learning about what is called the internalization template. So teachers get to actually take a look at the units ahead of time and plan together and make sure that they know exactly what it is they're supposed to accomplish by the end of that unit. And we're going to talk about implementation, have a place in place, in place. And we're very excited about that work. And then, of course, classroom engagement is something that I was focused. Absolutely. Next. Okay, eighth grade mathematics. 35% of the students, the eighth grade level, we need to save a grade leveling mathematics. I think it's important to know before we go to the next slide, that right now, the Oregon average is 27%. So mathematics is really something we need to like start talking about more seriously. Not that we have it in the past, but we have to just be more creative, more productive about what we're going to be doing with the students. In language charts, we have a project. Basically, we created a three-year plan. It's laid out. We're not fixated on making some changes, but it's pretty well thought out. That's why it's not about tipping point in terms of academic performance. In mathematics, we don't have that team just yet. Let's go ahead and see the data. So we look at the progression into the third, fourth, and fifth grade and sixth grade on the 2023, 24 academic year, just last year. Oh, by the way, all this data for 2023, 24 is embargoed data. So we, we don't want to share this out with everybody just yet. I mean, we can do it in this way, but just, you don't want to, I mean, take pictures and put it on Facebook. So you can see how as a level of difficulty mathematics goes up throughout the year, you have to rely on the foundation that you create, the performance, performance, performance goes down. We often see a huge gap. We often see a huge gap between fifth and sixth grade, and then it starts going up again. I mean, seventeen percent of eighth graders is they low, and unfortunately, it's kind of like that throughout the states and even throughout the nation. So, well, next slide. So one thing that we're gonna do, I'm gonna talk about math first, since that was the last thing that, that I just talked about. So we're gonna create a, a K through twelve team that is gonna be focused on creating an actionable plan. Kind of like what we did in language charts. So we're gonna take a look at the data together and not blame anybody or not say, you know, this is a third grade issue, fourth grade or high school. We're gonna go ahead and just say, here's where we're at. We need input from all the grade levels. I hear what they have to say. What we do with language charts, if we have an open canvas, we share all the data, say, okay, what are we gonna do? We run a lab, then group everything. We took care of the things that were defeats. We got rid of that. And then we created a plan that we felt really strongly about. TMS has a new schedule, and we have more time in math, a lot more time in math than we have before. We also have intervention blocks built into the schedule. For language arts, this is our third year with APTA. We know more. We know the curriculum better. And we're spending a lot of time making sure that the teachers feel really comfortable with that curriculum. We have a new evaluation model. I'm sure that Jessica will talk to you guys about that at some point. And there are clear definitions and standards for classroom practices, including routines, procedures, engagement. And what I like about that model is that it's very clear on what an effective teacher does in the classroom. And we have some administrators are learning about all that, how to provide really good feedback to teachers. Attendance focus, we have family engagement strategies. And we're gonna definitely spend some time thinking about what that looks like at the secondary, at the secondary level. And then one thing that I need to talk about here is that you know, when teachers look at their student performance data, they often look at I read, I read, what it does is gives you a baseline, and they, as the teachers teach, right? They can see the growth from the students, and it's, it feels good to see how much the growth. The one thing that we haven't spent as, as much time emphasizing is actually SBA. And SBA is what we use as a measure of whether students are meeting the standards at the grade level. So one of the things that we've been talking about, with the admin team, is starting to emphasize getting to know SBA. What does that look like? What is that assessment, that assess proficiency at the grade level? What are the questions like? What, what is the vocabulary that they're using? What are we missing that the students need to know? A few years ago, when my, my son got into high school, we went to the, you know, whatever, the open house, and we were talking to his history teacher, and he said to us, you know, yours today, we want all the students to take the AP exam in history. I would want them to pass. So I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm teaching to the test. Because the test meets the standards. If your child passes the test, they'll get college credit. So they're gonna know that test better than anybody. They're gonna know how to pass it. They're gonna know vocabulary. They're gonna know exactly what to do. I, I thought that was an interesting lesson because we often hear, oh, we don't teach you the test. We shouldn't teach you the test. You're right, we shouldn't teach you the test. But if the test assesses standards that they're supposed to meet at the grade level, that's something we need to bring it as one more variable within all the other things that we're doing. Hope that makes sense to you guys. Let's go to the next. So the thirteen, I have a dream speech, not I have a plan speech. These dreams change the course of history. And the reason why I put this here is because we do have a plan, and we have a thorough and well-thought-out plan that we all put together. But it is really about the people here in this room that make sure that we keep that dream alive of like what our kids can really do. And believing in kids is basically the best thing we can do aside from executing this, while it applies. But that's it. And I'll take any questions. I know I gave you the very same, you know, something. I have lots of data and, you know, and I have to say really soon.
I think just to add on to that last one, I think when we talk in, when we talk about updating on my goals and things of that nature, the more disaggregated data, because it still is embargoed, so in November and February, or whatever those times are when we share with the board, we'll try to break out some of those disaggregated data, so.
I appreciate you breaking it down and really showing us the growth. It can be hard to sometimes see just in the numbers, so I appreciate you breaking it down by grade level and then recognizing where students were at what point in that. So it's, that's helpful. And I'm also thankful that math is now getting a full district focus. And also, I just really appreciate all of the things that the district is putting into play, and then how you're supporting that work at each building to provide opportunities for teachers to get the tools that they need to help students learn.
Yeah, thank you for your support.
Have you ever have a question? How much longer is the nap time? It says more nap time, but I'm not sure if I just missed that.
Yeah, and I think maybe.
The middle, the middle school principal on the squad?
Well, our schedule allows for math to be every split day, even though we have an alternating schedule. Math does need every day, whereas some other classes might need every other day.
That's helpful, yes.
That's bad news from last year.
That is the same as last year. The other piece that is new is that we have an intervention period now. But similarly, for students, about eighty percent of our students would be in that class. And that means every other day, and that's another area where they'll be learning those, those skills that they need to really come up to grade level.
Thank you.
I have a question that had nothing to do, I didn't bring up here, but what are we doing to engage our families? I know we had some math nights in our arena. I feel like our missing partner in this is those parents at home and those family units that people are involved in. And what are we doing this coming year to help foster that? Because we can do what else we want, we can in school, but if it's not support, I, my belief is if it's not supported at home, it's really hard to move that needle that's there. And I thought we did a great job of starting that last year, because I went to those sessions that we had at different schools. But what are we doing to try to encourage that other part of the equation?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So just because I'm gonna be facilitating the process for the math team, one of the questions that I always ask is, okay, so now within this blank canvas of what we're gonna do, how are we gonna engage your families in this process? I am not certain that our families know how their kids are doing math as well as I would like them to know. I mean, I know that we have reporting periods, and they, they know that, but I think we're engaging in the process of how do you create this plan, or where do they fall within this plan? And then bringing in and having check into that to see how, okay, what do you do, what's there for us? Math, math nights are so wonderful and so fun. And yeah, so just know that, rest assured that I will bring that into the team once we start creating this process.
And maybe having parents that can engage other parents to, you know, get them on the bandwagon as well. We have such a strong group of our community that works with us, and I see that when I go to these events. And I would love to see more of that as we develop these skills. And I'm just grateful for this plan as it is. Like, I see other districts have these things, but I feel like we just attended, many of us just attended OSBA conference this past weekend. And, you know, I, I think, I, I won't speak for Rebecca, but her and I were in sessions together, and we're like, wow, we're doing so many things that are great. That other people are just starting to get, you know, the idea of doing, and we've already been doing that for quite some time. But I really love to see us engage more with our community.
I, I think, yeah, one thing, and maybe the elementary can talk about it, because the, the family engagement nights are really academic-focused now. And you've attended those, Rebecca, and, and so really, that's kind of the start of that. We saw that that really increased our, I, I think that's the big reason why we increased our attendance at the elementary level. And now, as we go into our second year, really, in that family engagement and those three kind of targeted evenings to really kind of get, have that academic focus. That math night was incredible, and our families left wanting more. And so when we start planning that, we know that that's also a good opportunity, a district-wide event as well, so.
Yeah.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to celebrate the, the good news that we saw in the presentation and the growth that's happening. And I know behind, you know, the numbers that you see on a, on a slide, there's a lot of hard work and blood, sweat, and tears, and, you know, tough conversations with kids and engaging families. And so I just wanna commend, you know, the increase in elementary attendance. That's a big lift. It, you know, five percent might seem small. That's a huge lift to see across an entire system. That takes a collaborative effort and a consistent effort. And I think that's wonderful. It's awesome to see the increase in proficiency, and especially from third to fifth grade. The freshmen on track, holy smokes. I mean, that's, that's, that's everything, right? And it's easy to, to see the attendance and be really scared by that number, because it gave me a little bit of a gulp. But, but what matters is what's happening, right? And if our kids are earning credits, then we're making progress, right? So that was really, that was really exciting to see. You know, I was really, this is, I think, my eighth or ninth year serving on school boards, Javier. And, and the, the thing about the state test is always such a hot topic. And, you know, there's this idea of, of high-stakes testing. And, and as we talk about engaging families, I wonder if our families understand what it means when you're proficient in, in language arts and you're proficient in math, what does that mean for your student as they progress through school and through life? And I just wonder if that can be more, you know, a bigger part of the conversation as we are engaging families. It's, it's not just about the number on the papers. What is that? What does being, being good at English, language arts, and math mean for my student as they matriculate through the system? And then what does that mean for their, you know, ability to be successful in, in, you know, post, you know, post-K twelve and career and things like that? And that's the piece that I feel like is always kind of missing, and we get caught up in, in all the other things. Because I think, again, not trying to speak for this board, but what we care about is not looking good, but that our students are successful. And, you know, so anyway, it's just something that popped in my head, and, and I don't know if you wanna speak to that at all. But that seems to me to be the biggest disconnect. And, and I know that Brent's on, like, the accountability committee statewide. I hope that's something that we can think about with the state test, because I think there's some frustration too about, okay, great, it gives us a snapshot in time, but it comes out months later. And how does this help inform me, you know, as a parent and inform us, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, the truth is that any high stakes test is not the end-all, you know. We don't, we know some kids, and what they're amazing, they're smart, and they do great work, and they can show participating in other ways, and they don't show it in assessment. So we always have to take that into account. You know, but at the same token, you know, we, we require humans in, in our culture to take tests often, to get a certification, to, to go to school sometimes, to like, you know, we do things like that. And I think that, I don't think we have to see it as soon as I was like, oh, we did so poorly, or we did so, you know, but more like, well, let's get to know it. This is really what the kids are supposed to show. I mean, if you look at the state website on, on the assessment, it talks about if you're in the third grade, the third grade and you met, it shows that you truly are, you know your stuff, you know, really well, and you know the content, and you're able to figure out all these things that the standard say. When I talk about getting to know the test, we also have things like this. I was putting data earlier today. I was looking at the number of third graders who were a few points from actually winning proficiency. To me, this case, they are really, they have math proficiency. They can be, but that would have bumped where the number that's published from thirty percent to like forty-one percent, right? We have some schools that will have been above, above the state average. If you, you know, so what does it mean that this kid was off by twenty points? However, we spend a pretty chunk of time talking about kids who are well below. We have interventions, we have a very well-developed intervention program. And we spend some time on tech programs and kids who do really well. We do have a pretty big number of kids who are right there in the middle. But if we knew more about the data, about that assessment, we, we believe that we can catch a lot more kids, you know.
And I think also, we don't ever teach, well, they never taught me when I was in Phoenix County District. And I know they didn't teach my daughters later about how to take a test, and how to approach a test, and how you can kind of suss out what the answers are. I mean, they didn't really figure that out. My girls didn't figure that out. And I didn't figure it out till I went to college. And it was way late, you know, so having those skills as well, I think we forget sometimes about that. So.
Thank you for that. Just one last thing on that, while I extended my time.
No, go ahead.
And if people spend thousands of dollars on, on, people with money spend thousands of dollars on, on their kids, you know, going to a classroom or a tutor or somebody who's gonna teach them how to take tests better, you know. So if we're able to offer that for all the kids, and as I said, it's not the end-all, and it's just one more component of everything.
Success in that.
And there are, just to follow up on that too, I mean, like, when he shared that data with me today, I thought, okay, that might be some low hanging fruit to give, you know, some confidence for kids. They have tools to do some assessment, practice assessments too, that are getting better and better, actually. And so it's not like it's, we have to recreate something. There are tools to use. And with more instructional time, with some schedule changing, we, we might be able to add some of that in, so.
I'm curious, we have data on more of the, like, the non-passing students. Do we have data on the students that are above standard? Yeah?
Yeah, we do. That, we actually have a group of students who have from really high. So, yeah, so like, third grade person was twenty-four, thirty-two, we have a kid who scored twenty-seven hundred. And I wonder if that's anything to you. Doesn't mean a lot to me, but it's much higher than, you know, than the.
And you have, I can listen to you all night, by the way. I think him sharing is always fantastic. So thank you, Javier.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Paulie. Any objections? You're done. The consent agenda is approved. Okay, information and discussion. First item is facilities and bond update. You don't have any facilities.
Well, you, you mentioned that September fifth, we were gonna start, John kind of sent it in the report. But I think we added some facilities information for you there. Lots of things going on, again, like Heather shared, it's just, I think our staff are gonna be really overwhelmed by some of the, you know, spaces they're walking into. Our middle school, our gym is basically gonna look completely different. For our middle school to have two really big gyms and great spaces, that's, that's, you know, a lot better than some high schools. So I'm really excited about that. I do wanna mention to you on the Phoenix campus, this, we, we did have an oak tree fall again. You might have heard, or remember a couple of years ago, or three years ago, maybe, that Oak at Talent Elementary went down, and we had a large oak on Phoenix's campus. And we were really lucky. Boys and Girls Club was on campus that day. But John is looking at, he did, working with the tree service, obviously getting that cleaned up, but assessing all the other trees, oak, especially on our campus. The oaks have a tough time sometimes at this point in the summer season, so. But we're all over that. But if you hear that, they haven't taken care of, we know injuries to report, but very grateful and lucky to tell you the truth, so. And that's it for facilities.
Okay, any questions on those? Okay, everything's on track so far. I said, I came, I came to the middle school yesterday to meet with Casey, and it's definitely not ready for kids right now. But I trust that everything is, is on track. It's like a school in the middle of the construction zone. But they were bringing all the old lockers out and stuff like that, so, yeah.
It's on trackish, yeah. This for staff, this for students in there. Yeah, yeah. They're, they're, they're working hard. All I have been a great, then, I mean, I think I shared this, but they've been working six, seven days a week, and wow, they'll continue to do that through the weekends.
Okay, good stuff. All right, legislative OSBA update.
You go, girl. You want me to go first? Yeah. Well, I think we all went to summer, well, most of us went to summer board, and that was great. You go, girl. Do you want me to go first? Yeah, well, I think we all went to summer, well, most of us went to summer board and that was great. I just got back from the. I can't remember. Um, no, the summit for early, for. Summer learning and after school programs put on by O D E and the governor's office and O F C. So that was very interesting. Um, I didn't have faith in the work group, sorry. But after going to the meeting, a lot of our concerns locally and. School board wise were addressed in from the workshop. Uh, they really realized that um, the funding. Is siloed. We had a big conversation about money being siloed and not being correct and. And the fu- the way the funding is and um, the way grant processes are. And how it just is not equitable to smaller districts and it's not applicable to all the students in Oregon. So they're working hard on coming up with plans. We had some really good, good, interesting work sessions. Um, I have faith now that they're listening and they're really trying and hopefully we will see some. Um, change. There was lots, there was a few legislators there and I think it's gonna be a huge overhaul because as Sarah has said too. We're two years, every two years it changes due to funding and so the kids never have a stable. We never know what the next two years are gonna look like and we just can't do that anymore. And I think that was a huge conversation that we just had. Um, so that was great. Um, we're gonna be heading into legislative session, uh, OSBA. Legislative team should be, I haven't checked my email for a couple of days, should be um, sending out, doing a workshop. And later this month on how to advocate and what we're gonna advocate on and some stuff like that. So that'll be interesting. And then we're really gonna go strong on um, legislative days. Hopefully we just are flooding the capital with school board members. And I'll keep you updated on that. Did you wanna add anything, Sarah?
I was just gonna say, we're composing an email to send out to the region with notes from our regional meeting. And then just um, a couple of upcoming reminders and um. One is that there is a survey that O D E um, would like to get. Uh, the school board perspective on accountability. And so we'll be sending, I think um, OSBA has maybe sent out the leak. The, it's not a leak, it's a link, sorry. And um, we'll be including that. We're hoping to get this email out. Um, in the next day or two. Um, John's gonna add some notes and we're, we're, we're gonna do it. So to encourage all of you to um, fill out the survey on. What statewide accountability could look like for our district so that that perspective is shared as part of the work group. And then um, the other thing is uh, P T A Capital Classroom has been doing series all summer. With different education stakeholders and OSBA is presenting on the nineteenth. So the F N and Adrian, Adrian will be presenting um, in that webinar on the nineteenth. At seven thirty. So it'll be recorded. You can register for it. So if you can't watch it live, but um. I think that having um. Those connections and the shared priorities with the different education partners in the district or in the state. Um, it's been important, so. And then um, I was really. I was thankful that Medford uh, school district during our. Region roundtable really talked about three specific funding priorities and looking at um, stable funding. With the governor's recommendation for increased um. CSL funding in the next biennium. And so really looking like what that. I'd like to challenge each of our districts to come up and know our number of what. That looks like in our district, what things wouldn't have to be cut, what, how we could best serve our students if. Um, we get fully funded and the Q E M model came out and it's very close. And so like, having those conversations about what that could mean and specifically for our district. And then also the conversation around special education funding. And really looking at what that cap and how that impacts how we serve our students. And then the third one of um, unfunded manatees and how much that's also impacting. The general fund dollars and how that's all having to stretch different places. So I really, that's in that you're getting a little, you're getting a little preview of it. Um, but those are the things I'd really like our region to um, think about and. And really advocate for as we're having this conversation with legislatures and looking. At how we're advocating and really saying those priorities and knowing our own stories so that we can share that very clearly.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good information. This, does anyone wanna share? I'm so bummed I couldn't make it. Does anyone wanna share any highlights from the conference? Anything? Burning, sticking out that you wanna? Share other than we're doing a lot of good things.
I did the book study um, workshop that I thought was originally just for administrative professionals, but it was called Radical Kender. And really impressive, so. That was one of the other things I was gonna put in this email is maybe looking at doing a book study, something on it, offering a time to come together. And really look at what that looks like. Um.
That's the name of the book.
Radical Keender, yeah, it was. Excellent. Have you guys read it? No, anybody heard of it?
I was really, I'm coming back from OSBA conferences and then just feeling empowered and. Just learning what other boards are doing and seeing. Well, nice way to put it, but just how amazing we are.
You are amazing and yet we're hungry to get better always.
I, I, one of the things I picked up from one of the sessions which might tie into what you're doing Javier is the strategic. Plan monitoring and some of the different districts are, have like a data dashboard where they have. Those numbers are on the, the, on the website or readily available for people to see. And that could be helpful for that community engagement piece, um, for getting them to know about that. And also they were talking about, um, I went to the community engagement advocacy panel. Session. It talked about how the board is holding quarterly listening sessions with the community. Um, and how, uh, you know, what, what the needs are, trying to get ideas from our community as well. And maybe piggybacking on some of those events that we're doing in the school. Um. Yeah, those are a couple of mine. There was a lot of data which I love too, so um, I've shared of that, but I felt like. Like I said before, I just feel like I'm really blessed to be living in this district and, and to see all the wonderful things that we're doing.
I, I just wanna piggyback on that and just the leadership of this board with Sarah and Dylan, obviously leading the roundtable. Participation, whether it's rural school caucus, color caucus, just input um, that we have in uh, on our board on those. Committees and just the statewide leadership and voice that um. This district has, so.
All right, thank you all. Um, next is Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee update.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay back here? Good evening, Kelly Soder, Equity Care, ready to see you all. I'm gonna um. Take just a minute and put my preschool hat on for a second. I know Brett told you a bunch, but we're super excited. September third, we'll open our, um, open our kiddos doors. Today was furniture movie day. We have like. Pazillions of cardboard, um, but it looks amazing. We have some before and after pictures. I'll show you someday. Huge thank you. I mean, like I can't even like the tech team doing all kinds of stuff, facilities and John and painting and all the things. H R, I'm like, oops, we gotta hire this, like, all the things, amazing. And we're just so excited, like. My, uh, our administrative assistant for the team, Monique Stray, has been like putting in bazillions of hours. Her husband came over last night helping. My husband and daughter came today to help us like at a last minute panic with this pallet and stuff. It's just been all hands on deck and, and so many moving pieces, but it's coming together amazing. I have twenty seven kiddos and just families, really, really warm response from families that were taking over the preschool. Just really lovely. Um, also, if you didn't know, um, we uh, have this beautiful other building. Thank you to the facilities crew again. Called the Family Resource Center, just in front of the family, um, in front of the facilities building. Uh, we did a little experiment this summer and had it open for three weeks, twice a week, for three weeks, partnered with Access. And local food pantry and they gave away um, just. Super awesome like snacks and good things. Um, we uh, had thirty plus people each week and each week we had more. Um, so definitely that was a great experiment for us and really meant to be serving like basic needs, right? So we are doing. Um, diapers, uh, non-perishable foods, hygiene products. Um, just kind of a gamut of things. Um, we will be open throughout the school year. We just haven't quite decided what the right process is for that. So we are doing a back to school event, um, August twenty seventh from nine to eleven. Our community care team will do. Back to school at the resource center focused on all things uh, school supplies and, and ready for school. And you probably, I mean, I, I'm sure you remember from last year, uh, just at the, in the June, we talked about a huge priority. For our district and our, and our kiddos in our schools is addressing racializing language. You'll hear, you'll hear more about that as we, as we get going. It's something that we plan to have as a focus all year. Um, tid- tidbits that will be incorporated in staff meetings and professional learning and um, addressing support of students and staff. Thank you to Joe Zavala again. Um, we really wanna hear from students and what their experiences are. And he's been meeting with some kids and putting together some pieces um, that will be shared kind of in a, this campaign. About speaking up and speaking out um, to, to make our schools safe places. Um, almost done. I wanna remind you that um, we have an E D I committee that has openings. So we'll be um, gathering more participation in that. And I believe the agenda in a bit here is to talk about the budget committee as well. And just a reminder that at some point this year or no later than next year, we need a budget committee meeting member. That is also an advisory. So that's my update for now, but more to come next year. Any questions?
I think, um, well, the next item on the agenda is declaring budget committee vacancies. So I think it would be good, maybe for, I'm sure you've already talked about it, syncing up and, you know, uh, if we have a. Person interested in one or both. Maybe you should be on both committees. That would make it uh, a lot easier. And then is it next year where the requirement that a board member can't serve on the? E D I committee?
Yeah, unless anything changes with the state, um, in September twenty five. We will officially have an educational equity advisory committee of which we have.
Right.
Um, but at that point, we'll wanna kind of look through any requirements or mind to need and, and you know, unless they make any changes.
Yeah, yeah. I hope that they do, cause it's kind of a blanket thing that doesn't always.
Yeah.
We enjoy having Nancy serve on that committee, so. Yes, um, okay, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, declared budget committee vacancies. Um, this is. The board, do we have to take action at the next meeting? Is that what we're doing?
No, I was just saying, just for advertising.
Okay.
And so I think, well, we have Laura's.
Yeah.
And we have one other.
Has, have we been in touch with them at all? Okay, all right. Okay, we have budget committee vacancies, everyone.
So there was some talk about how many vacant positions we're seeing what we're filling. Maybe I read it wrong. I don't know.
We have.
But. There's two that we're gonna fill, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we'll reach out to them. Declare these and then start advertising for them and, and you can, anybody's will, they'll reach out, yeah, yeah.
Great. He's been awesome to have for a long time. Okay, uh. Review District Employee Handbook. We don't, we don't take any action on this, but it's just there for review. You have any questions about that? Direct them to you, Brett.
Yep, just uh, for your review and thank ask Gunner team for um, putting this together and really revising this over the last. Several years to um, get up to date and really kind of get important information in there.
Important. Big thing is, as a business owner, getting people to read their handbook. That's an important thing. Jessica's in charge of that.
Yeah.
Good, awesome. It's Rick approved, Jessica. Okay, um. So meal prices, you wanna speak on this? Will you take action on this?
Yeah, I'll take act, um, and I think that remind me Denise, the only change was adult meal prices.
And students second. I see second. About that, we've worked on.
Yeah. Think of the hobbit when I see second. Okay, uh. Any questions on meal prices? Okay, um, okay, letter of intent.
Yeah, this is exciting. This is um. Just to share, this is, this is really a non-binding letter of intent with the Boys and Girls Club, but we wanna start getting. Some things in place. Once we do the sales agreement, that's where we will have some more uh, binding, but we have gone back and forth. I wish I would've got this to you earlier, so we will have to vote on this next time, so there may, if, if you didn't get a chance to. Read through this, I would encourage you to do so and maybe we allow a little more time on that. Um, action item next time to answer any questions. Um, but our uh. Attorney Thad has worked with their counsel uh, and has gone uh, back and forth on a couple of things, but both uh. Have agreed that this looks like a document that we can uh, live with to kind of start the process going and then that will. Um, have our consultants move on the next steps. And then we will also start working on an official sales agreement uh, as well.
Questions? So it's coming from us to them.
It's um, really from them. Yeah, it's supposed to be from them to us, but with. There, they didn't have a whole lot of experience doing this, so um, sure, they have counsel, but that has a lot of experience doing this.
Okay.
And um, and their, their counsel was in agreement, so.
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
I know it's addressed to Mr. Rowe, but that's this. It's, that did the bulk of the work on this and there, we wanted them to uh, look it over for their agreement, so. And they had counsel look it over, which I feel better about.
Think we'll take some more time in between board meeting, meetings to look this over and.
We had, if you, if you read it over and you have questions and yeah, feel free to re- reach out and we can kind of talk through it and then. If not, we'll have a discussion on um, September fifth, yeah, so.
My biggest question is with the conveyance, what does that mean in property overall? So, yeah. Okay, great.
And it may, if we do have some questions, it may be worth having that. Either, you know, call in or, or be here to answer some of these as well, so.
Yeah.
And or J.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Um, next is committee assignments. This was on our planning meeting agenda. The last meeting, but because we wanted to wait until we had everyone here, we don't wanna just assign people to committees. For this whole year, we could have, we could have, um, so just to facilitate a discussion about that, um. We have uh, the E D I committee, we have safe schools, which I think is typically two members, right? The audit committee. Colerode Facility and then um. Rats, which is new, that's new for, for board member participation, right?
Yeah, it's kind of our behavior, um. And, and with our commitment to sharing behavior, uh, reports to the board, it'd be nice to have a.
Yeah, okay.
And they meet, how often?
Third Wednesday, I'm reminded, two to three.
Good, it's on there.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then negotiations. We typically have at least one board member. Um, participate in classified and certified negotiations, so. Does anyone have any of these that they would like to participate? Does anyone have any of these that they would like to participate?
I would like to continue the safety.
Okay, great. Uh, Rebecca would like to do the Safe Schools Committee.
I'd like to continue in the EDI committee.
Okay.
I'd like to continue on the Culver Road Facility Committee.
Awesome.
I'd like to fill any gaps anyone does it take, but I'm kind of full on committees right now. But I'll, I'll take something if needed, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Look, you're taking care of yourself.
Rick is Safe Schools and Audit Denise. And I'd like to be in the Culver Road.
And what?
Culver Road, for who, Polly, thank you.
It makes me feel good to have our listeners CPA on the Audit Committee, so thank you, Rick. I would love to do the Raps Committee. If anyone else burning.
That seems like an awesome committee.
I'm, I'm super pumped about it, yeah.
I had to pick one, I would pick that one, but I'm not.
Do you all come with a rap each meeting? Bad joke. How many stanzas do I? Okay. Um, I noticed no one volunteered for negotiations.
Kind of tried to evolve and require someone down there.
Yeah, I, um, I don't think, I think I need to not do the certified this year, but I am willing to be classified. But, um, and we don't have the decides now, we have some time, but just, it's gonna start in the spring, so, think about it.
Maybe. Yeah. How important is it to have the same board member at each, because it was a pretty heavy lift?
Yeah.
Um, for one, and so, and I know Dawn did, um, attend, so there were two. And I can appreciate the consistency, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
The time commitment and scheduling of that really is a challenge.
It's a big, it's a, yeah, it's, it's a lot, and I think it is good for there to be consistency, um. So, I'd also like to, I'd like to just meet with our union folks on the, on the certified stat side of things and just talk through that, cause the, the, the way that unfolded and, and how it ended up being, because it was two board members and then it was, you know, at their request only one, and so I'd like to engage in a discussion with them again about that and just see if there's enough, because it certainly would be helpful, everyone I know is busy and has, you know, families and jobs and, you know, so, it is a big commitment.
I think it's worth a discussion, because I showed up a lot and they didn't seem to care, they welcomed me being there, I think we were coming. You didn't want me on the committee, but so, I think, I think I think it's worth the discussion and I think they might have seen maybe some, um, the usefulness of it and just, you know, sometimes.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good to have a conversation and
Yeah.
and see how that, that looks. And when does that start? Is that spring?
Yeah.
Oh, we know for sure.
Okay.
I mean, well, yeah, it'll be spring-ish, they'll start to doing some pre-meeting probably before the end of the year and then set some, set at least the initial dates.
Yeah, so we have some time.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you all. Did we cover everything? Got over to? Nancy, yep, Nancy wants to keep doing that. You got Rick and Rebecca for Safe Schools, you got Rick for Audit, I can do that too, if needed, um. That's pretty, that's a, only once, one meeting, so, um. Polly and Sarah for Culver Road. I'll do Raps and Classified Negotiations. Okay, that was very productive, good job, everyone. Um, next, we have some policies that'll be coming up before us. Um, any questions on EBBA, Student Health Services? This is replacing our policy. You have any comments on this one? Okay, straight forward, okay, uh, injury or illness. These are so far a result of changes to OARs and illnesses. JBN or GBN, JBA? Questions on that one? Fire change due to hospital twenty-two eighty. Pretty boys are played related to ORS stuff. Oh. The same, I was getting confused, I thought it was a duplicate, but it's the same in reverse, okay, got it, okay. Um, and then delete JHC because it's being replaced by EBBA. And then, um, JHCA. Utilization of sports participation, okay. Yep. Any questions on any of those? Okay, we have a recess. Tell them what we like. Eight minutes? Five minutes?
Eight minutes. Where?
Seven minutes, see you back here at seven twenty. And we're back. First item is, uh, board policy GCDA, GDDA. Did I miss? Hold on, I'm gonna make sure. Okay, dope, never mind, okay. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the new proposed version for policies. GCDA, GDDA, criminal records checks and fingerprinting as presented and deleting the old version.
Thank you, Polly, thank you, Rick. Any discussion? Okay, Rebecca?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Policy is approved, okay, J two, JEA.
I'll make the motion, I move to adopt changes to policy JEA compulsory attendance as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly, thank you, Sarah, discussion. Right, and just to point out, there was some discussion about the letter. Decided not to include that.
I didn't see it on here, so.
Yep, so, just, just to call that out, so it's, it's, you know, talked about, yeah.
Thank you for reading that.
Yeah, alright, Rebecca?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
How about yes? JGA corporal punishment.
Am I the first one tonight? I'll make the motion, I move to adopt changes to policy JGA corporal punishment as presented.
Yes. Yes, Polly moved, Rebecca seconded, Rick, yes, sir.
Does that mean lots are no longer allowed? They're not, they're not, no.
What did you say? They haven't been allowed.
Well, times definitely have changed.
That's what you said, is that what you heard?
Let the record show. That's amazing, thank you for sharing.
Thanks for me.
I know, that's, that's incredible though, right? How, how much times have changed.
That was just like last year.
It wasn't that long ago. Okay, um, any further discussion? Okay. We will vote, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Uh, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick? Yeah. Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. And last one, JGAB, use of restraint and seclusion. I'm just gonna reiterate what's written here, several changes to highlight, um, addition of immediate notice to the parent or guardian of any existing record, including audio, video of the incident. And such records shall be reviewed at the debriefing meeting, to which parents shall be invited. If additional information regarding the preservation and disclosure of such records, which have been, which have record retention and disclosure implications are outlined in the new, um,
Senate Bill.
Senate Bill, subsection nine and ten, thank you. Um, and so, it's all related to Senate Bill, uh, ten twenty-four. Did you have anything you wanted to share on this? This is why you stuck around.
I know, I'm like, are there any questions?
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt policy changes, or I apologize, I move to adopt changes to policy JGAB, use of restraint or seclusion as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Rebecca. Any questions for Tiffany, she stuck around, just, just for this.
Are there, so, are, um, what are the training, um, what trainings are you providing to staff around this policy or have things changed or?
So, Oregon Department of Ed has allowed more than just Crisis Prevention Institute, which used to be the only one. But we're speaking with Crisis Prevention Institute, so, it's myself and Mary Martina, we're the trainers. And, um, so, people who do any restraint as a last resort must be trained in CPI, the Crisis Prevention Institute.
Yeah.
That, that's what we're sticking with, the there is training about seclusions, but we do not do seclusions in our district. And, um, so, that's, that's our big thing. The, the biggest change, I think, that we follow legislation, was that staff who inappropriately or legitimately inappropriately do a restraint or seclusion or don't follow the steps can be reported to Child Protective Services, so, um, DHS. Those kind of bigger shop, especially for some of our special education staff. But what we're doing this year is the other training for all staff, not in how to do restraint or seclusion, but in the laws regarding restraint or seclusion, it'll be one of the online classes that all staff will take. Just because we have some surrounding districts that have some, just maybe some misunderstandings or some incidents. We were fortunate, we did not, but we wanna train all our staff to know when it's appropriate to do a restraint or seclusion, and again, for our district, no seclusions, restraint only when absolutely necessary, the child's gonna prove themselves to others.
Thank you.
So we did have training.
Good, thank you, I think that's.
No, cause this one's like a burden for like preschool through, like, fourth grade?
This is, this is every child, yeah, even through our transition program, through each.
So for the new preschool as well, so.
Uh, we have our new preschool staff, we'll be attending our crisis prevention institute, just.
And that's a benefit of having the preschools part of our district, because then we have, we, and we know the level of training.
And the other, it's like parent notification, our, our staff is really great about that.
What did you say?
Our parent notification.
Oh, our parents.
That is not new for us, that's really written in the board policy, we've been doing that.
That's one of the biggest complaints you see, when people complain about something that happens with their kid, not, not in our district, but in other districts, not notifying parents, and I just can't imagine that, um, and so I just really appreciate the work that you're doing with your staff to make sure parents know what's going on and that they're notified properly, so, thank you for that. Okay. Any other questions? Thanks for sticking around.
Hmm, that's good.
Um, we have a motion and a second, and we will vote, Rebecca?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Last is next meeting's agenda, September fifth. Any questions on that?
Yeah, just to note, we, uh, it will be at Phoenix Elementary, and the city of Phoenix will share, uh, kind of their recovery up, uh, efforts. So we'll have, uh, a report from them, um, September fifth, and it'll be timely, because it'll be almost four years from that, yeah, anniversary, so.
Yep. Okay.
Michael, can you remind me, um, I'm a little brain dead today too, um, if I wanna add some, not necessarily to this agenda, but to an agenda, is the best way to bring it up at a meeting or is the best way to email?
Uh, I think either way.
Can I bring it up now?
I would like to add in the future agendas, not necessarily this one, a discussion on extra board training such as, um, Washington DC advocacy, NSBA and different options. But I think we need to first maybe talk about how to do that and maybe some policies around it and then talk about some discussions. And when we get to that point, there's different options, like the Washington DC trip, you can go on your own or you as a district, or we can go piggyback on OSBA and the pros and cons of that, so.
Okay.
It's probably like several discussions.
Okay.
But I would like to start bringing that up.
Especially thinking about the budget item or budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The budget that includes, um, training and education for board members.
Yeah, just, you know, talking about how does one, you know, how does one request it, what, you know, are we, what ones should we look at, those kinds of things, so, and then there is, and then after we have that all settled, then there's some suggestions I can give or we can all look at and, and say.
Okay. Yeah, maybe let's, you and I can huddle up and then maybe with Brent and work at, you know, whatever we need to have prepared before we bring it to the whole board, but yeah.
Cause it's coming around, things are coming around the corner.
Yeah, I mean, would we be ready to do, to talk about that at the next meeting?
We probably could, I mean, I, it looked like a pretty packed agenda, so I don't wanna add anything to it, but I think it's something we need to have pretty soon, because, um, they're gonna be opening the, uh, I don't know what they're calling it this year, advocacy and something in Washington DC that's gonna be at the end of, um, January, some of it, and then beginning of February, and so that's gonna be opened up, I think in November, so if we can get just so we can get on track.
Let's make sure we.
If that's an option someone wanted to, to do.
Awesome.
That's a great idea.
Yes.
And thank you Denise for, um, I know we talked about rearranging the agenda and it's so nice to see it here and I forgot to give you kudos earlier, but thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for all your support.
Yes, thank you.
And Brett, would you, um, I, would you make sure the admin know too, that I am really appreciate them staying, I know it's a little longer introduction time and we may not utilize their wisdom each time, but I really am thankful that they're willing to stay, I know that's in your direction, but express our appreciation to them for doing.
I for one appreciate it for switch, I thought it was really good.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, good, good work, okay. Thank you all.